The December 10th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting. And by way of introduction, I'm John Hutchings. I'm the Chair of the Board, and to my left is Commissioner Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards. And to my right is Commissioner Time Enser. To his right is La Bonita Boomer, our Clerk of the Board. To her right is our County Manager, Ramiro Chavez. To his right is Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. And to her right is Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, Elizabeth Petrich. Thank you all for being here. And with that, I am going to ask Commissioner Vice Chair Edwards to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I intern, I'm going to ask City Councilman, John Collahan, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Make you certain?
And is there approval for the agenda for today?
I would so move to approve the agenda for today.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any amendments or changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Nope? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And a motion for the Board Meeting Minutes?
And I would move to approve the Board Meeting Minutes from December 3rd, 2019.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any changes to the minutes?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're item number one, opportunity for the public to address the Board. And some guidelines, this is a time where we welcome comment from the public, but it's when we are listening, not commenting and answering questions and debating, so we won't be responding. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes, and your time is up here on the Board, three minutes, and it will zero out. And at the end of your three minutes, your time has expired, you'll hear a chime. And La Bonita Boomer has the timer. Meeting attendees cannot donate their time to another person. We reserve the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. Please, if you haven't done so already, silence your phones. We ask that you be respectful. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory. No outbursts of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as a promotion for a for-profit business. And any material that's provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. And any remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before this Board on appeal would not be appropriate. When you come to the Board, or come to the podium, please introduce yourself and address the Board, not staff, address the Board, County Commissioners. Introduce yourself and about where you live in the county. And when I call you up, I'll call you up, and I'll let the next person know, so they know to be ready to come next, so we have a nice fluid process. So with that in mind, timer's ready. The first one to speak is Jerry Dirker, followed by Jack Grimes.
Good afternoon. My name's Jerry Dirker. I live at 2826 Cooper Point Road Northwest, Olympia, Washington, 9502. I just wanted to follow up on some stuff. We got some information last week that was disclosed from the city of Olympia that shows that the county actually fought that annexation for the Green Cove Park area project, the old Sundberg Sand and Gravel Mine area, and that whole piece that was pretty much stolen from the county in part using these incremental applications and annexation things, okay? This is something that straight up violates the Growth Management Act. You're supposed to have all these things planned ahead of time. The plans that actually were for that area, the Green Cove Creek Basin Plan, which both the county and the city had been part of, is a part of a comprehensive plan, said that they didn't want any further development in the area because it was too environmentally sensitive area. And the county actually pled it was environmentally sensitive and stuff in the court case on the matter. They sued to try to stop the annexation. But apparently, according to these attorney-client privilege documents, some of which we obtained here this last week from the city, they apparently, they now think it's not no longer attorney-client privilege. They are mentioning things in here that appear to show that they knew ahead of time that this application for this property was improper. In one case, Bob Sterbank, who was the city attorney at the time, back in 2006, said, "Did we really accept an application for property not located in the city? I thought we stopped doing that after Prudsmun," whoever Prudsmun was. And apparently, it was a project that they had done and got caught for, okay, doing an annexation and things on it. And then they also note that in one of these attorney-client things, back and forth, it's too Darren Knee neighbor here, and it says, "The Superior Court will hear oral argument on the Sundberg Woodland Park annexation case." The judge is Judge Tabor. Tom and Bob, that's Tom Morell, who was an assistant city attorney at the time, and Bob Sterbank, have familiarity with Judge Tabor. So it's apparent that they had some ins with Judge Tabor, who ruled upon the case at the time. And that's not a proper way of going about those kinds of things, as you may know. And since the city obviously knew this, and these documents were not obtainable by you guys at the time when the county did file suit and stuff, this is one of those things that I think you should look into and stuff. And these are continuing, so you might want to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Grimes, followed by Terry Ballard.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to address the Board again. My name is Jack Grimes, and I live on 76th Avenue Northeast in North Thurston County. It's budget time, and I'm here to express my concerns about the 2019-2020 biennial budget. I believe you, as Commissioners, have a responsibility to pass a balanced budget. Department heads should be required to operate within the amounts allocated to them. The budget should not be increased every year. The current need for a new courthouse and offices for county staff should be a priority in the 2019-2020 biennial budget. This should be a budget item each year until the needed improvements are funded. For the past few years, there has been an increase in taxes collected each year. Each year, the county assessor increases the value of properties, which increases the taxes we pay. The local sales tax has been increasing each year. The additional taxes should be used for a new courthouse and county office buildings. There should be no new taxes. You, the county Commissioners, have a responsibility to make the county government function on existing taxes and fees. Wasting $177,000 on a special election in the 2019-2020 budget to get the citizens of Thurston County to approve a property tax increase should not be necessary. The residents of Thurston County are in one of the highest taxed counties in the state of Washington. Hard choices are required. There should be no tax increases. The 2019-2020 budget should be balanced and include funds to start the process of building a new courthouse and office building. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Terry Ballard, followed by John Pettit.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Terry Ballard. I'm a resident of Tango Wild, which is unincorporated Thurston County, and I'm a retired 35-year veteran. I heard this morning on your meeting, before the meeting, about fishing wildlife. I was just wondering if they're knowledgeable in the proper stormwater facilities, so we don't have another tomwater accident like 300 gallons of oil going into the man-made Capital Lake. Also, I'm wondering about the generator of the waste and the closure of the shellfish in the Sound, especially in butt inlet, okay? As the sewage treatment plants are the generators of the waste, they should be responsible, and you should energize your health department and not get the okey-dokey for dumping solid waste into the waterways because the sewage treatment plants can't handle the illicit stormwater-slash-sewage illicit connections. Going on to the police. The police, I totally love law enforcement. It's my number-one priority. They keep us safe. If you have quarterly and monthly reports, why aren't they getting to you? The guy's reaching out. I heard about it. Why aren't you reactive to those? Oh, your excuse this morning was that you never personally received the report. But if you're not receiving these reports through your, most likely through your manager, okay, you need to receive these reports and be inactive. You're the power of the purse. So if you gave somebody $80,000, for example, 80 bucks, for example, and they charged $100, they should pay for that extra course, not you just okey-dokeying it and moving it on because, of course, you're the power of the purse. Moving on to the illicit meeting that we had last night of the Salary Commission. First of all, you're supposed to have, per law, per RCW 36.17.024, you're supposed to have 10 members, period. We're not conduct-a-board. Then you're supposed to have six members to have a quorum. And RCW 42.30.090 says, "Less than a quorum may so adjourn from time to time." They should have adjourned. They should have made no voting. And that's a illegal vote, whatever they did. And you've had illegal meetings in the past, and this is just a common occurrence. Mr. Edwards is there. This is just a common occurrence. It happens. And it strikes me as weird because we have two law enforcement officers previously that uphold the law, and we have a lawyer that practices the law, and you cannot follow the law, even though we quote it up here at the podium. And of course, nothing gets done. Thank you.
Thank you, John Pettit, followed by Jim, I think, Matthew?
You got it.
Did I pronounce it right?
You got it right.
Good.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm John Pettit from out at Rich Road area, East Olympia. Earlier today, I dropped off an item, which I'm hoping that you reach out to your prosecuting attorney to get a legal opinion about, which is obviously questioned, and I'm relating directly to the salary increases. Does Thurston County have to follow state law for the Salary Commission? Under no circumstance have I ever known a county ordinance to override state law. And how you can come into a consideration of raising salaries when you haven't even replaced one of the people that your office is supposed to replace in over a year. So by not replacing parties on this commission, you have a void commission. Now, essentially, what has occurred here, and then all of a sudden, there was a desperate push, "We got to get this done through the direction of the county manager. We'll get rid of these two, and we'll get a couple more people in." Bottom line is, the law is very specific about if you're going to use the Salary Commission as a basis for determining what wages should be, you need to follow that. You don't have to use the Salary Commission. There's options. There's other alternatives. But if you are going to use it, you need to follow the law. And I did point out that you all took an oath of office. And I, whichever one you want here, do solemnly swear or affirm, I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington. And I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of Thurston County Commissioner. Now, the other particular item I will address shortly is, through this little manipulation that was attempted at the county level with code, in theory, since you've chosen by your actions not filling vacancies, if you chose not to fill vacancies, seven of them, and had three people remaining, based upon the way you wrote this code, well, we don't have but three appointed ones, but three, two would make enough people to vote, so therefore we could raise the wages. You got to have 10. It's the law. If you don't have 10, you need to call the committee what it is, which is not compliant to the law, and therefore, any actions they take are not to be followed. Now, it's your duty now to clear the record, remove that from the auditors, because you only had five people out of what's supposed to be 10, vote on something. Please, follow your oath of office. Get an opinion from your prosecuting attorney if it's legal for you not to follow the state law.
And Jim. There we go.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. My name's Jim Mathieu. I'm a hydrogeologist with 30 years of experience, much of which has been in Thurston County, even though I live in King County. My message today is simple. North Point's proposed development of the Port of Tacoma property is not compatible with this area's high-functioning ecosystem and valuable water resources. The proposed development would cover approximately 500 acres, with impervious surfaces effectively destroying the natural hydrologic processes and disrupting the natural recharge, which feeds downgradient wetlands, creeks, lakes, and residential drinking water wells. One animal threatened by North Point's development is the federally ESA-listed Oregon-spotted frog living in nearby wetlands. This frog, that I've come to know through work with the Black Hills Audubon Society, requires two to six inches of water depth from February to April in a very specific area right next to the Port of Tacoma's property. And it needs this to deposit its eggs each year. The North Point proposal puts at risk the delicate set of water conditions that the frog requires to survive. I've also gotten to know families like the Newmans, who live a stone's throw from the Port of Tacoma property. They drink groundwater from their water well, which is directly downgradient from the proposed development. Contamination of their well from North Point's runoff would totally upend their lives, of three generations living together on that property. And it's a family that skillfully cares for the land and the wetlands on that land. There are many other families like them that are in harm's way there. Finally, we made a simple water volume calculation for the proposed development that indicates 430 million gallons of runoff annually would need to be managed and treated in perpetuity. That's about 900 Olympic-sized swimming pools, in terms of an equivalent volume. Also, the peak storm flow rates that would come off that property, if it were developed, would be the same order of magnitude that the lot wastewater utility treats on an average day. In summary, the decision to rezone and build out that North Point proposal would profoundly degrade the water resources, recreational opportunities, and ecology, compromising the quality of life for people and wildlife in this region of Thurston County. I'll submit five copies of a report that we put together to your county manager. I'd really appreciate it if you would please read it before making a decision about docketing the North Point proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Samuel Merrill, followed by Glenn Morgan.
Thank you, sir.
Although Samuel did check the box, yes or no. Do you want to speak, sir? Please, come on up. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Sam Merrill. I am the Chair of the Conservation Committee of Black Hills Audubon. And first, I would just like to say that I have read the report that Jim Mathieu has written and has submitted, and I fully endorse that and certainly encourage you to consider that as well. Overall, I support the not rezoning of the land that's now owned by the Port of Tacoma that the North Port Company is considering, and basically because of the ecological damage that developing this industrially would do to not only that land, but the adjacent land owned by the Fish and Wildlife, Washington Fish and Wildlife, the West Rocky Prairie area, which is about as large as the Port of Tacoma area and is being conserved for its wildlife. And also, Miller-Silvania State Park, which is on the other side, which again, would be damaged ecologically by this development. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Glenn Morgan, and I forgive you, Glenn.
For coming improperly dressed to the Commission meetings.
No, you wrote down, you're sorry for penmanship.
Oh, my sloppy penmanship. I know. That was bad there. Once again, it's always good to come speak to the Commissioners here today. My name's Glenn Morgan. I live between Tenino and Rochester. And today, I just wanted to kind of follow up a little bit on my public comment the last time that I was before this Board, and really just to more clearly express the need to probably assist the Commission, if you'd like, in looking at ways of reducing the costs of Thurston County, the budget here. I have been looking at this budget on again, off again, since 2011, and there are a lot of issues that seem to keep coming up to the front, frankly, that are hidden from you, the Commissioners, that are basically, I think, if you have to dig a lot deeper to look at opportunities, where you're going to be able to find places that you can save funds. And it does require a lot of time on your part. You have to get more engaged and involved in doing that. And I think that if you look at the dissent of the budget regarding, when you compare that to the cost that you're projecting, there's some problems there. You're going to have to resolve it, and you can't all do it by imposing taxes on the citizens. They aren't going to support those, and it's the wrong way to go. You do have to look at finding ways to cut costs. I would particularly be concerned about this as it applies to sales detention tax and the potential misuse of funds that I think is probably going to become more public next year. And I am working on an Attorney General opinion on that with a local state senator, so we can officially come out with that ruling. But the state auditor's office, I think, is going to support this, that the state has been violating that law. Going back quite a ways, I don't know when it started, I think 2010, it could be 2009, but that's about a $3 million hole in the budget that could potentially be created if you were forced to follow the law as written. And I think that that's a real issue that if, I mean, that alone should inspire you to go back in and actually look at the budget and find ways of finding cost savings with what exists there today. The voucher review program, I know that sounds small, but I've helped this, I've helped a number of jurisdictions do this, where they've actually gone in and found cost savings in places they didn't necessarily look for it originally. Staff doesn't want to do that. It's hard. It's a pain. But if you go in, you will find hundreds of thousands of dollars that you can save right now on an annual basis, and that doesn't even include some of the staff adjustments that are probably needed. I would also encourage you to look at the Central Planning Department, or the SPED now, as it's called. I know it goes through name revisions every few years. But there needs to be an attitude adjustment where we don't want them to look and find ways to destroy people's lives. ways to destroy people's lives and ruin their future in the county. We, we should find ways that you can build a house with having, without having to mortgage your future forever on just the permit costs alone, and an unpredictable kind of nasty code enforcement approach that prevents people from building a porch on their house, or just doing basic common sense things. We're not really talking about mass development, we're just talking about normal human development. And in an age when we're pretending to care about people who are homeless, or who have low income issues with housing, there's a lot of low income people live in the county that like to live on their own, they can live on their own, but they can't pay $40,000 permit fees. So with that, thank you very much, and hope to chat with you soon.
Thank you. That exhausts a list of folks that have signed up, but if you would like to address the Board of County Commissioners, you're welcome to come up. Anyone? 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 Okay. Thank you. Takes us to item number two on the agenda, the County Manager's update.
Excuse me, thank you Commissioners. I'd like to highlight a, the piece of document that Mr. Pittis submitted to you this morning. And I did have the opportunity to check with your prosecuting attorney some of the comments that Mr. Pittis highlighted on, on this document. And in fact, the statute does require the Board of County Commissioners to establish a salary commission that constitutes with 10 members, which you have. The statute does not expressly say that the commission cannot take an action with less than 10 seats filled. County Code is the one who determines what the quorum of this salary commission is established, which they have issued a quorum yesterday. And the action passed yesterday was unanimous of all the seats present. As a result, they take, the action taken by the salary commissions to make recommendations to the Board is within the scope and authority of the salary commission.
And has this been run by legal?
I coordinated with your legal, yeah, with prosecuting attorney.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir?
I thought we took action sometime back to reduce the size of the salary commission because we weren't having enough applicants.
And, and that's when my statement is, the, the, the commission quorum is defined by county code, which you approved that.
But didn't we reduce the size of the body?
Yes, you did. Yes, you did, but also you created a 60% majority vote. In this case, you had all five members present.
We didn't reduce the size, though.
No, you didn't reduce the size from 10 members, no. You just, you just identified what the quorum is.
Okay.
Any comments? Okay. Any other updates?
That's all I have for you.
Good, thank you. Takes us to item three on the agenda, consent items A through D.
I would move to approve consent items A through D.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items, consent items A through D. Any discussion on any of those items?
No, sir.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion, aye. That motion carries. Department item number four, the agenda item number four, Department Services, Emergency Services Performance Grant. And our Emergency Services Director, Kurt Harden, is here.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Kurt Harden, Director of Emergency Services. I'm here to request the Board to approve the Emergency Management Performance Grant, also referred to as EMPG, in the amount of $127,735. This is an annual federal grant with a performance period of June 1st, 2019, through August 31st of 2020. The EMPG grant provides annual funding to support local emergency management programs, including emergency preparedness, public education, resource management, logistics planning, mitigation planning. This is included in the 2019-2020 budget as anticipated revenue. This agreement supports the county's strategic plan through initiative four, Strengthen Emergency Management Planning and Community Disaster Preparedness. I request the Board authorize myself, the Emergency Services Director, to sign the contract and execute amendments not exceeding 10%. Subject to your questions.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Any questions?
No.
Nope. Thank you, Kurt.
I would move to approve federal fiscal year 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant, and that's in parentheses, Frank Frank Young, 19 Edward Mary Paul George, number E20-129, for the period of June 1st, 2019, through August 31st, 2020, for a total of $127,735, and authorize the Director of Emergency Services to sign the agreement, as well as future amendments that do not change the approved dollar amount by more than 10%.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Any discussion on those, anything regarding that?
No, sir.
Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda, item number five, Community Planning, Economic Development, setting a public hearing for plat extension. Hello, Ian.
Good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Ian Leffort, I'm an Associate Planner with Community Planning and Economic Development, and I'm here to request the Board set a public hearing on January 7th, 2020, at 3:00 PM or soon thereafter, to take testimony on proposed amendments to Title 18, Plating and Subdivisions. Thurston County Code, Section 1812150, Preliminary Plat defines how the Community Planning and Economic Development Department grants extensions for preliminary plats seeking final plat approval. The county has granted the authority to create regulations for preliminary plat extensions by RCW 5817140. The proposed amendments would change the length and amount of allowed preliminary plat extensions. The requirements for approving an extension are not proposed to change. In addition, the proposed amendment corrects the department definition in Section 1808133 by replacing Resource Stewardship with Community Planning and Economic Development to align with the department name change. The draft documents are available on the Community Planning website for the public review, and the public hearing notice will be published in the Olympian. That concludes my remarks, and I welcome your questions.
Any questions?
No, you presented the substance of this before, and so comfortable setting the public hearing to get some public input.
Wait, sir?
Just to make it clear to the public, this is actually going to give someone that runs up against a crucial timeframe, for whatever reason, some leeway to continue their business?
Correct. For the smaller subdivisions, it will give an allowance from the existing one-year extension to a possible one-time three-year extension for them to complete their project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to set a public hearing for January 7th, 2020, at 3:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, at the Thurston County Courthouse, Building 1, in Room 280, to receive public comment for preliminary plat extension amendments to Title 18 of the Thurston County Code, Development Code Amendment Number A-17.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing regarding the preliminary plat extension amendments. Any further discussion on this?
No, sir.
No.
Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Public Health and Social Services approving an E, an ECFirst certified HIPAA instructor-led training purchase. Yep, please come on up, Liz. Anna Maria.
Good morning. Shelley couldn't be here today. Shelley couldn't be here today, and so she asked for some support, Maria Ponte, Human Resources Director. And Liz and I are here today to ask you to authorize the Public Health Director to sign a sole source contract with ECFirst to provide instructor-led training for the county's HIPAA Steering Committee.
Okay. Is that it? Does Liz have anything to add?
Sure. Just as...
Introduce yourself.
Oh, excuse me, Liz Davis, Division Director of Child, Family, and Community Wellness at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. The reason that we're asking for a sole, sole source contract in this case is because we haven't found another vendor that can be able to provide this in-depth, in-person training. There are online trainings available that are actually more expensive than this in-person training, and this fits our needs very well. Staff have done a lot of research to make sure that this is the way to go, and so we ask for your support in providing this much-needed training on health insurance, portability, and accountability.
Wow, okay. Any comments?
Nope.
No, I believe we've covered this quite a bit in prior work sessions, so thank you.
Okay.
I moved to waive the county's purchasing policy competitive solicitations requirements. Section 13 pursuant to Section 10-D for a contract to provide a private instructor-led certified HIPAA professional CHP training class for Thurston County, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign a sole source contract with ECFirst for a total maximum consideration of $13,990 to provide this training.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of ECFirst certified HIPAA instructor-led training. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Public Works, resolution calling for sealed bids for the Fish Passage Enhancement Program. Charles Robert Paul, number 6700... Six what? I'm sorry, six what?
63006.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, excuse me, to call for resolution for calls for sealed bids for the Fish Passage Enhancement Program. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Public Works, resolution calling for sealed bids for the Fish Passage Enhancement Program. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Even though they're not railroad cars.
Excuse me. 8A, resolution setting the 2020 salaries for the Assessor, Auditor, Clerk, Coroner, Prosecuting Attorney, Sheriff, and Treasurer. Any manager?
Thank you Commissioners. I would like to ask Ruth Elder, she is the Clerk of the Salary Commission, to come to the podium and present the recommendations to you.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Ruth Elder, I'm Clerk of the Thurston County Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials. I'm also Community Program Manager at Human Resources. We're here today to request that the Commissioners take action on the recommendation of the Salary Commission that was made at their public hearing last evening to set the salaries as recommended for the other seven elected officials. This is one that requires your action. The Salary Commission sets the salaries for the county Commissioners, but only makes the recommendations for these other seven positions. I'd be glad to answer any questions regarding the process or anything else I can help you with.
Commissioner Mensah, any questions about the process or anything of Ruth?
I would just encourage citizens who are curious, this morning I asked Ms. Elder to give a more comprehensive kind of history, and if, and they can look in online and see a little bit more detail about that, if they're curious.
I'd be delighted to answer any questions from the public at any time.
You answered my questions this morning in terms of that, but...
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Edwards?
I guess, for consistency, I wanna read into the record comments that I made in front of the Thurston County, the Citizen Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials, and I made these comments in 2017, and just so folks know, the public knows where I'm coming from, Banley. Gary Edwards addressed the commission. He stated that the elected officials know the salary when they sign up to run for the office, and that the salary should remain unchanged until the next term of office. He stated that he does not object to the COLA. He recommended retaining the current salaries, giving, given that the county is facing, facing tightening budgets. And I feel that same way today, and I know, apparently, we have no say about our own county commission raises, raises that might go into effect, regardless of how this action is voted on by this Board, but if the other elected officials do not get a raise, I would also forego a raise and turn that money back to the county. So I'm just gonna let that go as a brief statement of my philosophy that I've had in place since about, well, since the Citizens Salary Committee was put in place in 2001, but even before that, as the elected sheriff. That's it, sir.
And Ruth, I'd like to, again, compliment you and commend you for your 24 years of service, public service, and sitting on this committee since its inception, the commission, rather. And you, you were given a lot of questions this morning that you answered very succinctly and clearly, with a lot of good information. And so I would also encourage people, as my seatmate did, to dial up YouTube, county website, wherever it's to be found, and have people watch that session, the work, study session this morning, work session, especially that piece on, on this topic, the Salary Commission. So thank you very much.
My pleasure, sir.
Is there a motion?
Well, could, prior to that, could I make one more quick statement?
Sure, yeah, you bet.
And Ruth, would you pass on to the Salary Commission that I believe we all appreciate their, their efforts?
I will, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
So is there a motion?
Well, I would ask my seatmates if Commissioner Mensah would rather make this motion?
I would make the motion, move to adopt the resolution setting the 2020 salaries for the Assessor, Auditor, Clerk, Coroner, Prosecuting Attorney, Sheriff, and Treasurer as recommended by the Thurston County Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials.
Are you not gonna second it, then?
No, sir.
Okay, second. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendations from the Salary Commission. Any further...
I guess for consistency, I want to read into the record comments that I made in front of the Thurston County Citizen Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials, and I made these comments in 2017. And just so folks know, the public knows where I'm coming from, Banley. Gary Edwards addressed the commission. He stated that the elected officials know the salary when they sign up to run for the office, and that the salary should remain unchanged until the next term of office. He stated that he does not object to the COLA. He recommended retaining the current salaries, given that the county is facing tightening budgets. And I feel that same way today, and I know apparently we have no say about our own county commission raises that might go into effect regardless of how this action is voted on by this board, but if the other elected officials do not get a raise, I would also forego a raise and turn that money back to the county. So I'm just going to let that go as a brief statement of my philosophy that I've had in place since about, well, since the Citizens' Salary Committee was put in place in 2001, but even before that as the elected sheriffs. That's it, sir.
And Ruth, I'd like to, again, compliment you and commend you for your 24 years of service, public service, and sitting on this committee since its inception, the commission, rather. And you were given a lot of questions this morning that you answered very succinctly and clearly with a lot of good information. And so I would also encourage people, as my seatmate did, to dial up YouTube, county website, wherever it's to be found, and have people watch that session, the work-study session this morning, work session, especially that piece on this topic, the Salary Commission. So thank you very much.
My pleasure, sir.
Is there a motion?
Well, prior to that, could I make one more quick statement?
Sure, yeah, you bet.
And Ruth, would you pass on to the Salary Commission that I believe we all appreciate their efforts?
I will, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there a motion?
Well, I would ask my seatmates if Commissioner Menzger would rather make this motion.
I would make the motion, move to adopt the resolution setting the 2020 salaries for the assessor, auditor, clerk, coroner, prosecuting attorney, sheriff, and treasurer as recommended by the Thurston County Citizens' Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials.
Are you not going to second it, then?
No, sir.
Okay, second. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendations from the Salary Commission. Any further discussion?
I would just say that, you know, Thurston County uses the Salary Commission process to try to keep these very difficult evaluations and decisions fair and impartial by a neutral board of citizens. I think that's a good way to do it. There's other ways to do it, and I'm open to, I think we're going to be talking about that next year. There might even be a more impartial way to do it. But I think that this is a reasonable process. I trust that your commission did its job. And so, you know, and then again, you know, cost of living, there was a reference in Commissioner Edwards' statement to cost of living. Elected officials don't have cost of living. County employees, I think, almost down the line do through their contract, so a big aspect of what's going on is kind of reflective of that as well.
Okay. So it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Nope, all in favor?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ruth. 8B, adopt Amendment Number Two for the 1920 biennial budget.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. This afternoon, I am requesting that the board consider adopting the second budget amendment for the 2019-2020 budget. As you know, we have two amendments each year to the budget. They are to address unanticipated receipts, emergent need, and you also, at this time of year, look at the projects that are not anticipated to be completed this year and going to roll into next year. So the amendment before you consists of grant awards that have been received in recent months. The revenue is the same as the expenditure amount, so there is no impact on fund balance. There are projects that roll into 2020. The total amount of those projects are $964,000 in expenditures in 2019, goes forward to 2020, and then in the general fund policy level changes to the budget, the budget increases in 2019, $19,000 in revenue, $517,000 in expenditures, and in 2020, the general fund expenditures decrease by $30,000. In policy level total changes, in 2019, other funds, the revenue change in 2019 is $125,000, expenditures are increasing by $888,000, and in 2020, revenue increases $200,000, and expenditures increase by $1,053,000. That is due mainly to additional projects that come into the Grand Mound Watershed Capital Reserve and looking for the major amounts, the storm and surface water, and land use and permitting projects. So the main items in the general fund is an increase for the Sheriff's Office of $475,000 and an increase in public defense of $150,000. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question?
I don't have questions.
Any questions?
No, sir. I believe we've been over that quite extensively. Thank you.
And I would just say, speaking for me, I take the budget piece very seriously, and we've had extensive engagement with the Sheriff's Office, and I want to publicly commend the sheriff's staff, all of them, from top to bottom, for the real tough, challenging job that they each do every day. And I've always advocated, when it comes to budgeting, not all things are equal. It's much easier to hire an employee for one department than it is for fire and safety. And so it's much more expensive to hire and maintain a 24-hour operation with law enforcement. So after the discussion we've had with the sheriff and the undersheriff, I'm really looking forward to cooperation in dealing with these budget stresses that exist within the law enforcement budget. So that's all I need to say about it. So thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move to adopt Budget Amendment Number Two, including attachments A and B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Amendment Number Two for 19 and 20 biennial budget. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Nope.
Yes, I'd like to say that I'm deeply concerned about the additional general fund spending in this budget amendment, budget amendment, and we have to do better in 2020 in structuring the budget and stopping, you know, what's been a pattern of deficit spending. One of the Commissioners this morning mentioned a couple of times that he felt that the Commissioners inherited from previous Commissioners, you know, a financial disaster, and I don't think that's accurate. The budget numbers that we've been presented by staff show that going as of early 2016, we had a balanced budget and a healthy two-month budget reserve. In the last four years, we've seen deficit spending and a rapidly dwindling reserve, and so whatever the fault is for that, wherever the blame lies, it's not with previous Commissioners. It's right here, and it's on our desk. I've been here for a year. My seatmates have been here for three years. We have to do better in 2020, and I'm not, I don't vote, I vote with a heavy heart for this type of additional general fund spending in this budget amendment.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. 8C, the 2020 Lodging Tax Grant Awards.
Well, Commissioners, Robin Quartz with Commissioner Edwards' office. I'm here today to present the LTAC or Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for the 2020 Grant Awards and ask you to accept and approve their recommendation. The lodging tax is an excise sales tax authorized by RCW Chapter 67.28, public stadium, convention, arts, and tourism facilities. The tax is paid by people who stay overnight in a lodging establishment such as a hotel, motel, bed-and-breakfast facility, or campground. As a result, the Board of County Commissioners have set aside $45,000 for next year's funding cycle to award grants promoting tourism events, locations, and activities for attracting visitors to Thurston County. The LTAC Committee is comprised of five members, two from the businesses that collect lodging tax, two members involved in activities authorized to be funded by revenue received under RCW 67.281617, and the fifth must be an elected official of the county who serves as Chair of the Committee. The 2020 Revenue Grant Funding Cycle was open for submittal of applications from 8:00 AM September 9th through 5:00 PM October 14th, 2019. Seven applications were received, and the total amount of funding requested was $97,000. The Committee met on Monday, November 4th, to receive application packets and discuss the ranking process, and again on December 2nd, 2019, to rank the applications. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommends the following grant awards for 2020. Gateway Rotary Club, $3,000 for the Brats, Brews, and Bands Event. Olympic Flight Museum, $5,000 for the 22nd Annual Olympic Air Show. South Thurston County Historical Society, $3,000 for activities and events for the Tenino Depot Museum. Thurston County Community Planning and Economic Development, $20,000 for the Thurston County Fair. Washington State Senior Games, $11,000 for next year's local senior games, and the Yelm Chamber of Commerce, $3,000 for the Squali Valley Barbecue Rally. With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Questions?
No, I have no questions.
Okay. Nor do I. So is there a motion?
I would move to approve the 2020 Lodging Tax Grant Awards to the Gateway Rotary Club for $3,000, Olympic Flight Museum for $5,000, South Thurston County Historical Society for $3,000, Thurston County Fair for $20,000, Washington State Senior Games for $11,000, and Yelm Chamber of Commerce for $3,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2020 Lodging Tax Grant Awards. Any further discussion?
No.
No, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
8D, interlocal agreement establishing district court filing and jury trial with the city of Yelm.
Thank you, Commissioners. As you are aware, District Court from Thurston County provide many services to the local jurisdictions. That includes the city of Tamwater, Lacey, Rainier, and Yelm. And each jurisdiction uses the District Court services to either process the prosecution or perhaps using the public defense, but also using the courts to conduct trials along the way. So this particular proposal is with the city of Yelm, where the city of Yelm has already agreed on the terms and conditions to cover the cost of summoning a jury, and that cost is $170 for 2020. And also, this proposal includes a jury trial daily fee. In the event that one of those cases, and they are referred to District Court from the city of Yelm, goes into a trial, the fee is going to be $413 per day, per trial. That will be in 2020. This agreement also has an escalation factor to cover inflation for 5%. So the proposal before you is to approve this agreement and give the authorization to the county managers to sign that agreement on your behalf. Jennifer Creighton, the District Court Administrator is present here. If you'd like to ask her any particular questions related to this agreement or any type of services the District Court provides.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Any questions?
No.
No, I just want to get an update on the ceiling later. But it's a service not provided. We'll do that at the end. Anyway, no, I don't. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve and interlocal agreement with the city of Yelm establishing district court filing and jury trial fees, and authorize the county manager to sign the agreement and future amendments that do not exceed 10% of the terms of the agreement.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you. 8E, amend county policy contract and increase funding.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, and I am requesting that the board approves a extension of the county's contract with Stellar Associates. This contractor is assisting the county in the update of our policies and procedures. We brought them in, and they did an initial review, and it turns out that the county has hundreds of policies across the county. And so the project that we're working on is to look for ways to streamline the number of policies, reduce the number of policies that we have, streamline them so that staff know where to go and where to look, doesn't matter what kind of policy it is. We found policies in many different places, HR policies, IT policies, finance policies, general administration policies, as well as each office and department has its own set of work policies and procedures. That creates confusion, and staff don't always know where to look. So we are consolidating into a single policy manual. Some of these policies are 20 or more years old, and they need to be updated. And this contractor is helping us with this project with research, writing, and review of our updated policies and trying to get them in place. We're starting with the top 10. We have a number of them in the review process ready to come to the board early next year for adoption, but it is a complete overhaul. So we are asking to extend this contract through June of next year and increase the amount of funding for the contract by $30,000.
Okay. Any questions for comments?
No.
Anything?
No, sir. I'm ready to make a motion.
Nor do I. Go ahead, please.
I would move to waive competitive bidding requirements in accordance with Thurston County Purchasing Policy 6G, and authorize the Assistant County Manager to add $30,000 to the contract with Stellar Associates LLC and extend the termination date through June 30th, 2020, for continued work on a comprehensive county manual of policies and procedures and future amendments that do not exceed 10% of the terms of the contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend county policy contract and increase funding. Any further discussion?
Yes. Could I bring up one thing? One more thing, sir?
About trains?
No.
Go ahead, Gary.
What budget does that $30,000 come out of?
So this funding is general fund, and it's in the non-departmental budget because it pertains to all offices and departments across the county. That's one of the things that non-departmental is used for, and the money is already in the 2020 budget.
Does any portion of this come out of, for an example, dedicated funds to the road department, for an example?
Right. So because it does impact every office and department across the county, it's part of our indirect rates on a two-year lag. So we pay for it initially out of the general fund, and then two years from now, we'll allocate that cost out to other restricted funds. That'll create a revenue into the general fund to partially pay for it.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Very good.
Okay, I'm...
You already read it. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're getting into the Commissioners' report, but can we have, do we have an update on the courthouse ceiling?
So I have not received an update from the facility staff yet, but before I left the building, there had been a temporary fix in place. What had happened was a drainage pipe came undone. That created a deluge of water onto the ceiling and caused tiles to fall down and a lot of water on the floor. So they had reconnected the pipe. They were taking steps to support it appropriately so that it won't come apart again. They're allowing the ceiling to dry before they put in new tiles, and they were in the process of cleaning. It will take dry weather to do a permanent fix, but facility staff think that this fix will at least get us through to drier weather.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner Items, where we report on our boards and committees and such. Commissioner Menzger?
Thank you. Attended a number of events in the past week. I spoke to the Rochester Chamber and also had presentations from the Chehalis Tribe and the Rochester School District about their bond and levy coming in February for the Rochester School District. Attended the Innovation Expo put on by our Economic Development Council. Attended the Olympia Climate Strike on Friday. Attended the Olympia Master Builders Annual Dinner, Holiday Dinner, and Installation of Officers on Friday. Attended workshops put on by the State Commission on Hispanic Affairs. We had presentations from the Department of Licensing, Department of Transportation. Very interesting contact I made related to the Rochester Main Street Project. It turns out that DOT, or yes, DOT, it has its own little fledgling project to study state routes that also serve as main streets, the way 512 does in Rochester, and what kinds of synergies they may need to do, like we were talking about lighting upgrades and different infrastructure upgrades. upgrades and different infrastructure upgrades. I want to make sure that our people in TerrPC get connected with the folks at DOT that are just starting to work on this. We may be able to collaborate. Emergency Management Seminar last night. On last Wednesday, the Inter-City Transit Board voted to institute a five-year zero-fair demonstration project. There's a whole lot of thinking that went into this and good reason, so if folks are questioning it, please contact me by email or on my Commissioner page, and you can see kind of what it's about. And then, finally, this is our last meeting of the year, so I'm going to make one last pitch for those citizens, mostly in my district, who reside in the Chehalis River Basin. You can sign up for flood alerts, and you can do that at chehalisriverflood.com. And Lewis Thurston and Mason, sorry, Lewis Thurston and Graves, Harvard Counties are trying to get as many people as we can by December 31st, a little friendly contest. So, if Thurston folks, I'm going to put a map up, I think, later this week, on, you can check exactly where you live to see if you live in the Chehalis River Basin, not all of Thurston County does, but about a third of us do. And if you do, I think those alerts would be really useful.
That's it.
All right. Commissioner Edwards?
My week was spent mostly water quality issues, Deschutes River, Capital Lake, Puget Sound, discussions with Department of Ecology, and all of that was having to do with excessive nitrogen in our rivers and waters that flow into the Puget Sound, and on economic development conference down in Grand Mountain.
All right. I attended the, as my seatmates did, the Regional Economic Forecast and Innovation Expo at Great Wolf Lodge last week, and attended a very interesting presentation by J.T. Welcox and a gentleman named Bill, I can't remember his last name.
Taylor.
Thank you. Bill Taylor from Taylor Oyster Farms. And it was regarding oysters and fish and farming, and the industry as a whole, and how the industry is changing, and has changed over the decades. And it was very interesting. The whole, the focus was economic forecasting and how to be diverse and survive and supply food to folks. And there was a large group of Evergreen State College students in attendance just to sit in on that presentation, and it was fun engaging with them afterward. Attended the Mayor's Forum. All the mayors in the county and I met last Friday and talked about a host of issues that involve all of us, each jurisdiction. There's a lot of overlap, things that are occurring and yet to come. Also, as Commissioner Minzer mentioned, attended the OMB Christmas Party and Installation. And then, Commissioner Edwards and I attended the very short and brief Thurston County Fair Board Christmas or holiday get-together. I was probably there about 20 minutes, maybe 30 minutes. It was a family emergency, so we all left, from that family, not my family or our family. And then, yesterday, met with the county manager and a representative from the State Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding a Boston Harbor project that we're looking to see how we can cooperatively work this, some type of a renovation out in the future regarding the boat ramp and our bathrooms and parking and maintenance and such. And that's way down the road, but we're coming together and talking about such a thing because it's very vital to that community and vital to the region, because a lot of people canoe and boat out there, birdwatch. There's a lot of festivals and activities and events out there as well. So, it'd be a massively great improvement. That might not cost us hardly anything, but that's yet to be determined. That was the extent of my week. So, with that, now I'm turning to the county manager to review our agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. As Commissioner Minzer stated, today is your last formal meeting for the year, so let me walk you through your combined schedule for the remainder of December. Following up the board meeting today, you have a public hearing related to the proposed precinct boundaries. At 3:30 in the afternoon today, you have your regular and last Board of Health meeting of the year. Wednesday, December 11th, at 11:30, you will be attending the Thurston County Chamber Forum Boss of the Year Event that will be located in Hotel RL Olympia, 2300 Evergreen Parkway Drive Southwest. You will come back here tomorrow at 1:00 in the afternoon to get a briefing related to the Black Lake Special Use District. At 2:00 in the afternoon, you will have a briefing from Public Health and Social Services related to their strategic plan. 2:30 in the afternoon tomorrow, you will have a briefing related to septic system monitoring and maintenance issues and opportunities. 3:30 in the afternoon tomorrow, you have a briefing related to the Historic Commission ranking for the 2020 Heritage Grant Program Application Award. And at 4:30 in the afternoon, you have been invited to participate on the American Legion Centennial Celebration of Incorporation that will be located on the American Legion, Post 94, 2602 Marvin Road Southeast.
What is that?
This will be Wednesday, 11, December 11th tomorrow. Should be on your master calendar.
It's not on my calendar.
At 4:30 in the afternoon.
Okay. Oh, because I blocked.
Thursday, December 12th, you will have, you will be attending, I believe, Commissioner Hutchins and Commissioner Minzer only will be attending the Leadership Thurston County Government Day. I will also be attending that event that will be located in the Thurston Regional Planning Council at 2424 Heritage Court Southwest here in Olympia. At 6:00 in the afternoon, you will have been invited to participate on the Port of Olympia Holiday Reception, and that will be located at the Olympia Country and Golf Club located on 3636 Country Club Northwest in Olympia. Friday, December 13th, you have also been invited to participate, attending the morning, to the Inter-City Transit Annual Holiday Banquet, and that will be located on their Maintenance Building at 526 Patterson Street Southeast in Olympia. In the afternoon, you have also been invited, at 2:00 in the afternoon, to participate in the DUI Drug Court Graduation in Superior Court. Moving on to next week, nothing on your combined schedule on December 16th. On Tuesday, December 17th, as I mentioned, there is not a Board of County Commissioners meeting, but you will convene here 9:00 in the morning, and instead of having your regular agenda setting, you will have a Commissioners's Check-In. The main focus of that will be going through your assignments to many boards and commissions for 2020. Wednesday, December 18th, you have an executive session here in Room 280. At 10:00 in the morning on December 18th, you will have a briefing related to knotweed on the Deschutes watershed. And at 11:00 in the morning on December 18th, you have also an executive session where you will be reviewing the performance of the county manager. And at 12:00 noon, you will be having luncheon with your elected officials. At 2:00 in the afternoon, you will have invited to the Adopt a Family gift drop-off in Rochester. Every year, we, we, the Commissioners' Office, adopt a family, and this will be the time where we're going to be delivering the gifts to the family we have adopted. Thursday, December 19th, you have been invited to participate on the Polyworks Holiday Luncheon, and that will be located at the Tilly Campus, 9605 Tilly Road South, in Olympia. In the afternoon, Commissioner Minzer and Commissioner Hutchins will be participating on the Thurston Mason B. Fairable Health Organization Governing Board Meeting. Nothing on December 20th, and...
There is a steady meeting, by the way. Steady?
Yes, we do have a steady meeting on Friday, the 20th, at 8:00 in the morning. Thank you. Also, on Sunday, December 22nd, you have been invited to participate at 4:00 in the afternoon to the 11th Annual Community Hanukkah Celebration that will be located in Sylvester Park, 615 Washington Street Southeast in Olympia. Moving on to the week of December 23rd, nothing, you have your combined schedule. Wednesday, December 25th, the Crown Courthouse is going to be closed and observance to the Christmas Day. And I will take us to the week of December 30th, and your first meeting will be on Thursday, January 2nd, where we'll have a Commissioners's Check-In, and I will be developing an agenda for that meeting. 1:00 in the afternoon, you will have a Superior Court update, where you will have the opportunity to welcome the new Presiding Judge for Superior Court, that will be Judge Price. And that's all I have for you. Thank you for this great year, and I wish you the best, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. And I wish you all the same as well, and all of our staff. Is there anything for the good of the order?
No.
No, sir.
Then, we're in recess. We'll take recess, or do you want to adjourn?
We just moved to the public hearing.
We're going to go right into the public hearing. Okay. Yeah, but we need to set up?
I think we are.
It's already set up? Good. Okay, we'll start the public hearing then. You still got the law for me? Tilly and Tony. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ramiro.
You have the script correct?
Yes, I do. Are you ready? You ready? Everybody's ready? Here we are. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding proposed 2020 Election Precinct Maintenance Plan. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public testimony on the proposed 2020 Election Precinct Maintenance Plan. In accordance with RCW 29A, I'm sorry, .16.040, precinct boundaries may be altered at any time as long as sufficient time exists prior to a given election, and that no precinct exceeds 1,500 active registered voters. Thurston County has four precinct boundaries needing necessary adjustments due to the number of active registered voters over or nearing 1,500 in the precinct. So, there is a signup sheet in the back. If you would like to testify, please sign up in the back, and then, we will come out, you'll be able to come and testify. We'll get to that point in a minute. You'll have three minutes to testify. I'll be calling out your names. Okay, so, I'm going to open up the public hearing and a staff presentation by Tilly.
Just Tilly. Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon. For the record, Tilly Nappasipola, Elections Manager for the Auditor's Office. With the February 11th special election, the March 10th presidential primary, and the April 28th special elections all next year, my staff is currently in the process of performing precinct maintenance now. These changes are necessary adjustments to precincts with registered voters reaching the maximum number of active voters in those precincts. We are here today to present these proposed changes to you at this public hearing. Right now, I'm going to ask Tony Wiki and Lynn Watanabe to lead this presentation explaining the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Tilly.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tony Wiki, Thurston County Elections. As was mentioned earlier this year, we have four precincts that are nearing or above that 1,500 maximum limit. Our first slide that we have actually shows the areas. There's one of our Lacey precincts that's actually exceeding the limit, and there's another one on the southeast part of the county near Lacey that's also exceeding the limit. There is a Tumwater precinct that is nearing the limit, and then, there is another precinct that's out in the, near the Rochester area that's getting very close to that limit. Our proposal, we're proposing to split those four precincts, which will create four new precincts and require renaming the county precincts and creating two new city precincts. Our first precinct is the Hartwood Precinct, and that's out near the Lacey area. It currently has 1,543 voters, and we're proposing to divide that precinct along some section The northern part of the precinct would become Hartwood North, and the southern part would become Hartwood South. The northern precinct would have approximately 1,000 voters in it, and the southern portion would have 496 voters. The southern portion is currently undergoing a lot of development down there, and we anticipate that growing substantially more than those close to 500 voters, so it'll probably end up getting close to or equaling the other precinct. The next precinct is Henness. That's the one out by Rochester. We propose splitting that on 183rd Avenue. The southern portion would become Henness South, and the northern portion would become Henness North. Currently, the southern portion would have approximately 780 voters, and the northern portion would have about 552 voters after that division. Our next precinct is Lacey 42. This precinct's growing very rapidly. Currently, it's well exceeding the 1,500 limit. We propose splitting that on Britton Parkway. The northern portion after that split would have approximately 900, or 719 voters, or that would be the southern portion. It would retain the Lacey 42 name. It's the more established and been part of Lacey longer, so then, the northern one would become a new Lacey 54. The new Lacey 54 would have 975 voters, and the southern portion would have 719. Next is Tumwater 32 precinct. That's across Old 99 from the airport, kind of between the airport and Deschutes River. And in our proposal, we propose splitting that on 79th Avenue. The southern portion would become a new Tumwater 33, and the northern portion would remain Tumwater 32. With the northern portion would have about 883 voters, and the southern portion would be in the neighborhood of 550 voters. There's still a little bit of development going on in the southern portion out there. So, all in all, we would be adding four new precincts. Two of them would be in Commissioner District 2, and two of them would be in Commissioner District 3. We'd have a total of 284 election precincts. In those four precincts, currently, there are about 6,000 voters. We would be sending out new notices to those voters of the changes in their precincts. And we also would be proposing to update the Commissioner District legal description to include those precincts in it. The Commissioner District legal descriptions are basically a list of the precincts within those districts, so whereas the boundary remains the same, adding those precincts would cause us to update that and have the new names in there. Other than that, that's about all I have. If there's any questions?
Any questions?
Hartwood North and Hartwood South is the best you could come up with?
It is. It was kind of on short notice, this go-around.
You could've had some fun. My precinct is named Broadway, which I always think's kind of cool. I don't know who came up with that, but...
Many of those precincts have historical connotations to the names, but I'm not sure.
You think, yeah. Any questions, Commissioner?
No, sir. We've been over this.
Okay. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Now, we will, I'll ask people if anybody has signed up on the sheet. Nobody has signed up on the sheet? Does anybody in the audience want to speak to this, on this topic? Anyone? Second time, third time, anyone? All right. Then, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is shut down, closed. Is there a motion?
I am prepared to make a motion. I would move to adopt the ordinance for the proposed legal description and precinct boundary changes, updating four precincts with boundary line adjustments, creating four new precincts, and the ordinance for the proposed legal description for two Commissioner Districts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed 2020 Election Precinct Maintenance Plan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And now, this meeting is adjourned. And now, this meeting is adjourned.
We've got seven minutes.
Do we have a break before we go?